How we should proceed. I, I really like myself to do a secret ballot, but we can't obviously do that in the circumstances. We've got, got some options. We can either go ahead and take a vote and we'd have to go around the, the membership of the, of the commission and have you give, give your vote. We could have somebody make a nomination and then a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot. That would be another possibility. A third possibility would be to defer the election of a vice chairman until we are able to meet in person and, and have a secret ballot. So what is the wish of the, of the commission members regarding election of a vice chairman?
Ken, this is Jessie and it would be my preference, I believe, to do it when we're in person.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, good enough. We'll do it that way then. I, I think that's a good plan and we'll, we'll table it until a meeting when we, we can all be present in person. Should, should be able to get along okay until that time, whatever that turns out to be. First, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of the matter that we talked about at December's meeting, conditional use permit for animals at 317 North Elm. And you've all seen the explanation of what has happened in the meantime there. And the report from the city administrator regarding the exception that, that the helders would qualify for in order to be able to have farm activity on that land. Are there any questions or further explanations that anyone would like to have? Before we request a, a motion to, to as far as disposal of that, that matter from, from the commission agenda?
Yeah, I would like to address the commission, you know.
Sure, go ahead.
I apologize because I missed that. And had I caught it in time, it never would have even gotten to the commission and we could have handled it staff level. So that's just one of those things. I just never caught it until actually Matt asked me to dig into it a little more deeper so that we could find more information to support the, the opposite outcome. And then I, I found that I went into Matt's office. I think we're gonna have to let them do it. So anyway, again, I apologize for wasting the commission's time with that.
Okay, thank you. I guess the question that I had, and I don't want to belabor the point with a small area they've got there. My question would be, is the principal activity going to be to produce income? And it depends on what your definite definition of income. Yeah, there'll, if they ever sell a, an animal of any kind, there will be income. But to my notion, it's not there for the purpose of producing income. But I mean, it's a hobby for all practical purposes. But like I say, I, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna press that point, but I.
And that's something that we kind of wrestle a little bit, you know? We discussed that quite a bit. And again, like you said, you know, they sell one animal.
Yeah. There's no profit, but there will be an income.
Can you bring me up to speed on what actually happened? I mean, I guess it's null and void now, I guess, so.
Right. They wanted to have farm animals on their lot, which is in the city. The city has zoning regulation that says you can't have livestock or fowl on your lot in the city. And so we were going through with the process of deciding whether or not the commission was gonna allow them through a conditional use permit to, to have that. Similar to what we did with the elementary school. So again, we were moving forward with it. We actually did have a meeting and we wanted to get, we tabled it because we needed more information. And that's when I discovered this particular clause in the zoning ordinance, the agricultural exclusion that allows someone, if they, they have a lot and it's not in a flood zone and they, they are just exclusively having animals, you know, and then nothing else, no other business on the lot that we allow them to do that. So. So, yeah.
Yeah, it may be worth the commission's time to think about the agricultural exclusion and kind of thinking about how, because that's, that's a pretty broad swath that just allow that exclusion. So it may be something that we want to revisit in the future and think about amending. Because it does, you know, it, it kind of comes at the end of the code. And basically it null and voids a lot of other regulations that we have and do that. So it may be worth taking a look at in the future and thinking about, you know, if we're gonna allow whatever type of farm animal, you know, sometimes it, sometimes we get into urban chickens. I know that's a big thing that happens. People want chickens. You know, I think we need to think about the implications of this as far as what the agricultural exclusion could, could cause if we weren't allowed to continue. It's probably a good thing we didn't know it existed because it could open up a door for some other things that we're not necessarily comfortable with. So it may be good to think about closing that loophole and thinking about some other language with that. That would just be a, a future issue, obviously.
What would be the best, should we ask Jan to put that on, on an agenda for, for the next meeting? Would that be the best way to do that?
I think that would be a worthy to have that discussion at the next meeting and think about what we would want to allow for agricultural use.
Can we, I guess we can presume just from our conversation here that she's aware of that request then?
Yeah, she is listening and taking minutes.
Good. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comment about the proposed action for dismissal of this conditional use permit application? If not, the chair would entertain a motion as to that's disposition of that, that case number.
Absolutely.
Okay, Eddie has made a motion. Is there for, for dismissal? Is that, am I understanding correctly? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second that.
Okay, Krista has second. Any discussion before vote? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 No?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion has passed and staff will take care of the matter then from here on. Okay, we're next on the agenda then. Case number ZCU 2021-01, conditional use permit for an air bed and breakfast at 201 East A Street. Applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Heine are with us. I guess we'll let you say whatever you want to say to start with. We'll go from there.
Well, we're hoping to have the bed and breakfast and it's gonna be a very part-time thing, we think. We're. Type of, of, of room in, in our, in our city. She said that she's checked with all the hotels and stuff and she's told me what they kind of charge. And she said that a lot of times the, the students who are coming in to Tabor, they, they want them to stay overnight and, but the, the parents need a place to stay and sometimes they send them to the motel or there's another bed and breakfast in town. And she just thought there was a real need for this. She was excited that we were going to be doing, hopefully be doing this. And so it's just gonna be, like I say, targeting Tabor. We're not going to put it on the internet because it's not really a destination place. It's just more of like a service type of thing. And we don't think we're gonna have really very many because of the COVID for one thing. And if there wasn't COVID, we might have three or four a month. So it's not going to be a big deal. And I've talked to Celia. She shares the duplex with us and she had some concerns and, and we addressed those. One of them was because we share a stairway to the basement, you know, there's, there could be that contact. And so I told her that I would be happy to let her know when anybody was going to be there. So that's our plan anyway.
Do you anticipate that your people staying there would need access to the basement? I guess in tornado season they might.
Yeah, only in tornado. Otherwise, we're telling them that that is off limits.
Yeah.
But it isn't, there's a door to the outside there, which.
Okay. Questions for the Hines from commission members or members of the public, residents of the area that, that are here or comments? Yes, please.
I, I have a question. You said you're not going to have it on the internet, but Airbnb is on the internet.
But we are not going to do that. It's called, it's called an Airbnb, but we're not putting it out there on the internet. We're just going to Tabor, basically.
We're not using the Airbnb app.
Correct. Yeah, right.
Do you want to voice?
Okay.
Your concern. This would be your time to talk, Celia.
Any other question or comment or?
Well, my concern, I, my mom and I live right next door to the duplex. She's on the, she's on Washington Street right next door and I am on A Street right next to Celia. And it's a quiet neighborhood. It has been. We've been there for many, many years, 20 plus. And with that, our concern was that we would not ever, we wouldn't know who's supposed to be there, who's not supposed to be there. And if you're, I don't know, college kids, you know, get pretty loud at times. And my concern too was for Celia that she's been there quite a long time. And I didn't feel like it was fair to her to have that put in there next door to her. I just didn't think that was fair or right. And we've got a nice, quiet neighborhood and I'd like to see it stay that way.
Okay, just for the record, so we make sure that we get it on the minutes. Could you say your name and where, where you live?
Okay, my name is Beverly Elliott and I am at 205 East A Street. My mother isn't here. She's 95 and she is at 204 South Washington Street. And she agrees with what I have just said.
Okay.
I'd like to give a little history of why entrance is like that. In the late 1950s, there was somebody that sold a quarter of land to a widow lady. And she built that house with that money. And she had a missionary daughter who she was hoping was gonna come home and live in where I live. But she decided to stay in Florida after she had been there. So it was okay for them to have that door in the back because they ran back and forth like, you know, family. But when there are two different families doing it, it's a little bit different situation.
Okay, thank you for those comments.
May I ask, may I clarify my question is how will you get the news out? Has Tabor made an agreement with you that when they have people come, they're calling you?
I just talked to Marion Cleaver and I told her that depending on how the outcome of this, that I would send her a letter and maybe some business cards that when somebody called in, she could give them our, our name and number. And then she also gave me the, or other people at Tabor that she thought could benefit, you know, from the bed and breakfast that we're having people, you know, the adults come in.
Maybe we should clarify, would Tabor be doing the booking or would you?
No, they're just referring them to us.
Okay.
And I know through the Airbnb app and the vacation by owner app is how taxes get paid to the city. So how would that be done if it's not an official?
Talking about transient guest tax, I presume. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what it's called.
Yeah, that's what that would be. Transient guest tax.
I also talked to a Realtor. If it would be harder to sell my place if there's a business next door. And she said yes.
I have a couple of questions. Just trying to get up to speed a little bit on the subject of Airbnbs and so on. I guess a couple of questions. One, how many do we have in Hillsboro? Whether it's Airbnb or just bed and breakfast, is it? And I guess another question is, does it go with whoever owns the property? And if that person sells, does the B and B change or drop depending on whoever buys the property next? Or whatever, just clarification?
Yeah, being, being as it's a conditional use permit, it follows the, the owner and the property. Once either one of those changes, then the conditional use permit is null and void.
Okay, and how many do we have currently?
That's a really good question.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out, Joe.
Maybe Jan knows, but she's being.
I don't know. I don't know that we have a ton.
Very silent.
They're, they're probably more available than are registered, I would guess. I'm sure people are probably doing it without coming for the proper.
Well, and we did allow one.
Yeah, there's one.
Yeah, just.
We had a hearing a couple of months ago.
Yeah, okay.
South Maine.
Isn't that?
It's almost the exact same situation over here on a duplex.
Right, that's close to our house. So we're kind of in between both of them. The proposed one and the one that got approved, I think. We're 215 South Washington. So yeah, there's one, I think, across the street, just up west of us or something.
So Davey or Monica, can you explain the house situation? I mean, two front doors and a?
No, there's separate entrances to the front.
Two garages or, I mean?
Yeah, two carports.
Carports.
Yeah, yeah. And then you come in the back door. And as you come in that back door, Celia is to the right, the staircase is down the middle and then we're to the left. So there's just that one entrance to the back.
It's a single staircase for, for both apartments.
They didn't have room to build the driveways or the garages in the center like most of them do. So they have one to the east of my place and to the south of their place to make this place so they can use it for what they wanted to do.
So I got, I'm sorry, in the, on the Zoom, you guys can't see this, but in here I snapped a couple of pictures. This is a picture of the doorway. This is looking in from Celia's house to it. So that door right there is to the outside with the curtain on it. And the other one goes into the other side of the duplex. That's a ditch. So here's a, gonna catch up to me.
This is Krista. Well, I would guess the situation of the doors, I would think for legal liability reasons, they want separate entrances and be able to lock the doors. I don't know if that's a part of our, what we are talking about, but I would think they would want locks. I mean, they have to provide Cecilia's security. I would, you know, that's not our discussion, however. I guess my question is, and I wasn't a part, I don't think, when we authorize the other B and B, but what are, what are, what are the city, what is the city's stance? Or what is, what is the zoning for B and Bs? Or where can they be? Or is, what's, what's on the records for the city of Hillsboro in, in having an Airbnb?
That's, it's in a R2 zoning district and allowable uses in a R2 zoning district does not include a bed and breakfast unless there's a conditional use permit. And then it, it is on the list of allowable uses with a conditional use permit. So exactly what we're doing here is right in step with what the zoning ordinance requires. Does that answer your question, Krista? Okay.
I think that was a yes.
Yeah, was that a yes?
Sorry, yes. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And you're planning on this just being for parents and not for students, correct?
Yeah, yeah, there shouldn't be any children there or young adults.
But I don't know how we can control that. I mean.
Well, I think in the contract, when we allow them to come in, we would just say adults only.
But how will the city control that or know that it's being done that? I mean, I'm, I'm sure that you would, Mona, but I think over time I, we just might lose track of that. I just don't quite understand how we can say some people can stay there and some, you know, I don't know how that, I don't know how we can make a resolution to allow that or, or put a preference or those kinds of things. I mean, with, you know, is that a discrimination situation?
Well, also in the contract is gonna say, you know, no loud noise, you know, no parties, no drinking, no smoking, no pets.
How many people go by contracts and stick by them?
Contracts are enforceable, but somebody has to initiate it, the enforcement.
Is it out of line if I speak again?
Go ahead.
Because I agree with you that I think there's a need for that. And I think as, I, I'm here with her. The main concern is that back door. And then I didn't know if by fire, if they have to have access to that back door or not.
And I did talk to Ben about that already.
Yeah, you have to, you cannot close off a means of egress that exists.
Yes.
But there would be, they have a back door and a front door. And so that would, that would, they would have proper means of egress. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how you would work getting people down in the basement in the event of a tornado. But you could keep the door locked, you know, because that wouldn't, that door's not a means of egress.
So the basement, is it a whole basement and cut in half and about just like?
They always go down there anyway.
What's that?
Now, we keep it open for them to, to go down.
They come down. She doesn't.
Yeah, we have a community tornado.
I want to speak as I talked with a parent just the other night that's from Tabor. And she actually stayed at the other Airbnb this year because her son had surgery. And she was very thankful that there was a place that she could stay because she came in from Colorado and he had major surgery done, but it was done in Kansas. So it was good for her to have a place where she could stay. He did not stay there. He stayed in the dorms, but there, she was here to be with him. And so she was thankful that there was actually somewhere in Hillsboro that she could do that. So. Yeah, just as a side note, that it would be a benefit to Tabor parents for those reasons. And so.
Is there a policy if there are parties and stuff, can we take away the conditional use permit or something like?
Can, by its very nature, a conditional use permit means you can put conditions on the permit. Again, you know, and whatever conditions the commission sees fit, but then enforcement becomes.
Who enforces that then?
Right.
Who enforces it?
Well, likewise, either we could put conditions on our recommendation to the council or the council, if, if we didn't put any on, or if they, if the council thought there needed to be different ones or more or whatever, they can do it too, right?
That's correct. Yeah, this commission makes a recommendation to the council.
Right.
The council has the final say.
Well, this is Krista. What was the discussion when you gave a conditional use permit to the other duplex? Because it's probably a pretty similar situation or not.
I don't believe there was any opposition.
We didn't have any members of the public here at, at here, as I recall.
Well, again, I'm sorry, but, and I'm actually very familiar with the other one. But the only concern for me is that shared basement. Celia has her freezer down in the basement. So, but I also trust that you will be screening the people and they will want to come back. So they will, I'm sure that they will adhere to it.
Well, and that is a unique characteristic of this particular building.
Yeah. So Cecilia cannot lock her back door, is that correct?
Yeah, she can. Yeah, it's a shared door. And we keep it locked except in tornado season when Mrs. Andrew and Bev can come and, and go down the basement.
I'm not sure the question was about the exterior door. The question may have been more to the access into Celia's apartment.
Yes, she can. Yeah, she can lock that and we lock ours.
Oh, okay. As, as long as she has a lock on her apartment door, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, we, yeah, we both do.
Other questions or comments? I think then we'll close off the, the public comment portion of our meeting. Among the commission members are, are there comments or, or? At some point, somebody will need to make a motion about the disposal of the, of the, the application. So commission members, it's up to us now.
On the other conditional use permit, were there any stipulations or any, anything other than given for a certain period of time? Or what happened on the other one? I feel like there's a precedent set for that.
It was granted without.
For what period of time?
As long as they own it.
Yeah, it would, it would be until such point it changes ownership or stops being that use. So.
So there were no stipulations on the conditional permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Joe, I have another follow-up question relating to previous B and Bs. Have any, I know that doesn't sound like there've been too many in Hillsboro yet. Have there any been denied temporary applications like this?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Not well, not since, not since I've been the building inspector. Maybe, maybe Jan could address that. She'd have to fly a paper airplane in.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, again, that's kind of like Krista did, just checking on any precedent. Because I, it, to some extent, it sounds like each case is unique depending on, you know, location and the situation of the house or apartment or duplex or whatever. So I could see where there could be variation certainly. But just wondering if there had been any denied. If so, why? So that's kind of what I was looking.
I could go ask. Yeah, I don't know. We.
I can think of two others that there have been in town that are no longer used for that purpose. There was one on South Main and one the corner of A and Jefferson.
Yeah, the Carousel.
Those are neither one.
Right.
Bed and breakfast anymore, I think.
And both of those were, before I was building inspector.
Did Pat and us have, did she ever officially have a B and B on?
On Kennedy. Didn't she have one on Kennedy and, and C Street?
According to Jan, there's never been any that have been denied. Not that she's aware of, so.
Well, we, yeah, we finally have to make a decision based on, on the merits and the information that we've got hearing this evening. Okay, other?
Have we heard from any other? I was just gonna say, have we heard from any other of the neighbors or those in the neighborhood besides what we've heard tonight?
No, sir. I haven't.
I haven't.
I can definitely understand the concern for safety or what type of occupants might, might be on, you know, come on, come into the bed and breakfast. But I guess my one thought that I might have is, you know, when you purchase a duplex, you don't have any control over who may buy the other half of it. So that's, I guess that's a little bit where I'm coming from on it. So that's, I guess that's a little bit where I'm coming from on it.
Other comments? If not, is somebody at a position to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Airbnb.
Okay, Eddie has made a motion to, to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Joe has second. One more opportunity for discussion or questions. After that, we'll, I think, poll the commission members individually for a vote.
Do we need to make conditional?
Yeah, you would have an opportunity to set conditions at this time that, yeah, that would go forward to the city council and they would have to make a determination on, the final determination, basically.
So you can not allow certain things.
Yeah, as long as it's a.
It feels kind of nippy to me.
Yeah, it gets a little bit tricky. What usually happens, and we've had this happen recently in the past, is if you put conditions on it, I, I always run them by the city attorney because they can get a little bit, i- if you're doing something that's not related to the use per se, that's what it gets down to. So. You can definitely put conditions on it. It's just you have to be careful with it and there's nothing that says, once it leaves here, that that will be the final.
I think according to parliamentary rules, the motion that is on the table now and has been seconded does not have any conditions or restrictions on it. The motion is for approval. If there are to be any conditions or restrictions added, that would be by an amendment to the motion that's on the table. And we'll give an opportunity, certainly the opportunity is open now for that type of action. If not, the chair will call for a, a motion on the, or a vote on the, the motion as it stands.
So as it stands, what would be allowed if we're just by the, the, the motion and the second, what was, what exactly would be permitted if that's approved?
It would, it would be permitted to have the use for an Airbnb type situation or rental, temporary rental, like is probably the more accurate term. So, you know, you, whatever comes along with that.
But that's what any, every other conditional use permit currently has also, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, one more opportunity for comments, questions among the commission members. Okay, chair calls for a vote. I will read the names and now, I'm forgetting already who's, who's with us tonight and who's not. June is not here. Jesse, what is your vote?
Yes.
Lily?
Yes.
Gary Tibbetts was not with us, is that correct? And Krista, what is your vote?
Yes.
And Pete's not with us, is that correct? Ed?
Yes.
Ed votes yes. Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Chair declares that the, the motion has passed to recommend to the council approval of the conditional use permit. And that, do you know when that will be on the agenda at the council level?
Yeah, well, it could be as early as next week, next Tuesday at four o'clock.
Possibly next Tuesday, and that will be a public meeting as well. And the council would entertain comments at that point too, right? Okay. Good. Well, thank you all for your input on the questions and discussion and vote. We'll move on then to city administrator's report. I think there was not any thing referred from our last meeting to the council, so there's nothing to report back to us from that. But what other comments do you, you have?
Just a few things as far as, we've had a lot of, a lot of questions about the Harrington Hospital Clinic. That kind of relates to planning and zoning things. So as far as what needs to happen with that, the, the plan right now, as it stands officially, is for them to stop seeing patients at the end of April. So what they do with that building is just sort of up in the air still and there's an open lawsuit with regard to legality of it from some citizens in Harrington. From our perspective, we have an obligation to make sure that that building is secure and that it's safe. As part of the building permit process, you know, we have, we have a little bit of authority in there and, and through the code also, the, the property maintenance code and through the fire code, we can enforce a few things to make that happen. So we've sent them a, a letter, actually this, this week about securing the outs, finishing the outside envelope of the building so that it's watertight against vermin and fireproof, as much as anything can be, fire resistant. Fire protected, that's the right word. So, you know, they have, they have an obligation to do that. And then also they have to prevent a blighting influence. It's about blight with regard to downtown. So Tyvek isn't gonna work on the outside of that building. It's gotta be something, you know, siding, something. They have originally in the plans, a, a certain type of siding structure. I'm not sure if that's what they'll do, but so we just want to let everybody know that we are on, on the case as far as that goes and making sure that that gets taken care of in appropriate way.
But we did let them know that whatever they want to put up has to be approved.
It also has to be approved. So that's, that's kind of the update with that. The other big project in town is the fiber project that's going up and going again. They took a little break over the holidays and unfortunate weather plays a big factor in what they can get done. They had a little update with them today. They're a little behind, but they're talking about getting everything finished up still sometime in, in late spring. So that's not too far off where they originally had this talked about. They're gonna be rolling out a few more public service kind of pieces of information. And then starting to sign people up more as well and, and kind of getting that process schooled back up. It's been a, a long project and they've, you know, thankfully, knock on wood, haven't been hitting as many utilities lately. So that's a positive thing, I think. We still do probably fifty locates when we get them in a day. So we're running around, staying ahead of them, trying to make sure everything gets marked. But it's, it's a growing pain kind of situation. At the end of the day, we're all gonna be very happy with what we have, but we have to go through a little bit of discomfort, I guess, as, as we do that. So that project's moving forward.
I have a question related to that. How long do we leave the flags up in our yard that have been marked? We've already worked here and I've been back, just curious.
Have you got a box on the side of your house already?
Yeah. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Two weeks is the answer.
When we start rolling it.
No, two weeks is the answer because the locate is good for two weeks. And that's why, because flags get removed and, and moved and things like that. So if, if the excavator or the contractor calls for a locate, if they don't excavate within two weeks, they have to call for another locate. So two weeks and you can move the flags.
That's fine. Like I say, it's not a big deal at this point because nothing's growing, but once the lawn starts growing again, we'll probably not want the flags there.
Yeah.
Okay. One more opportunity. Is there anything that has come to mind that we need to address as a, as a commission? At this point, are we aware of any future business that we may have to deal with or no, no applications that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay. Good enough. Then.
Let me ask you, Ken.
Yeah.
One, one quick question. The topic that was talked about earlier to visit some point about farm animals, et cetera, and city, within city limits, would that just wait until we actually need to have another meeting versus just for that purpose?
That was the, my plan anyway. We wouldn't call a special meeting.
Makes sense.
Just for that. Okay.
I agree. Thanks.
Okay, if not, then the chair will declare the meeting to be adjourned.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.